Are you guys ready?
You're on.
All right. Good evening. This is the special meeting, public hearing for Strawberry Fields. It is Thursday, November 14th at 7:06 PM here at the Dye Middle School. If we could just please rise first for the pledging allegiance. All right. First order of business before we do anything for the public, just so you guys know, Jason Quinn, who was one of our voting members on Strawberry Fields on this case, he has resigned from the zoning board altogether. So because of that, we do need to appoint a, one, a third member to replace him and a new alternate to replace somebody if they end up no longer being alternate and now have to be on, captain, our replacement, the alternate as well. Go ahead.
I'm going to appoint myself as the voting member.
When you have a motion made to appoint yourself?
Yes. So can I please have a motion made to appoint Michelle Lima as the third member for the Strawberry Fields decision?
Mr. Chairman, point of order just to confirm and totally administrative.
Sure.
Was Ms. Lima at all of the prior meetings?
She has been.
She has been.
No, actually, she had missed, she had missed one meeting and will be addressing.
Okay. So you can do a law and affidavit for that. Okay. Just wanted to check.
No, no, thank you. Yes, that's me, so, okay.
Just trying to get the procedure.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so keep going. You had the motion made?
Yes.
I was about to make a motion to nominate Michelle Lima to serve as the third voting member for the Strawberry Fields project for the zoning board appeals.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Now, Marguerite, does something that we need to?
So Michelle, in accepting that appointment, did you, you would indicate you weren't present for all of the meetings? So the question for you would be, are you able to review minutes from that meeting? Do you feel comfortable that that can bring you up to speed on what took place at that meeting?
I do.
And that you feel you can continue to go forward and be a voting member on this case, having brought yourself up to speed on those missed meetings?
I do tonight. I do.
And/or watched a video of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And can you, are you willing to sign any affidavit paperwork associated with that for the record?
I am.
Okay. So that being said, Jonathan, you will still remain as the alternate position in case we do have to replace somebody else among the voting members. Other than for house committees, we are all set for now. If we could just, the applicant can come up whenever they're ready. I believe they have new plans for us. Do you guys want to start with that? Is there anything else you wish to just start off with?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, Christopher Agostino, counsel for the applicant. Just to refresh everyone's memory, when we were here last month, we proposed an alternate layout in schematic form that we had previously kicked around during a work session, but the plans that were presented at the last hearing remained in schematic form. And we left the last hearing with the intent of submitting more detailed engineered drawings that include preliminary drain, preliminary grading, preliminary stormwater management facilities that were sized on a preliminary basis. We also took this opportunity in developing the more detailed plan to address some preliminary comments that we received from the board and from the audience as far as a bus stop turnaround was deemed one of the things that was critical. Some concerns about drainage in particular areas that we took a detailed look at. And with that, we were able to submit a full plan set before the deadline that the board had set two weeks prior to this meeting, which gave the board's peer review consultant, GZA, an opportunity to review those preliminary, more detailed plans and provide this board with a peer review letter that was able to review the preliminary plans and provide comments as far as the civil engineering aspects of the project. We also did have another back and forth between the applicant's traffic consultant and the board's traffic peer review consultant, addressing or getting into a little bit more detail on some of the, again, concerns that were raised during the process previously about traffic counts surrounding the project and speeds on Somerset Ave and some of the other concerns that were raised. So tonight, we're prepared to describe some of the additional detail that was added to the plan, and then we would anticipate that we would hear from the board's consultant as far as the civil review, civil engineering review preliminarily. And then we would also, we'd also be prepared to have our traffic consultant discuss some of the issues that the traffic consultants have been able to narrow down as far as critical open issues. And then I believe the board's traffic consultant is here as well, so depending on the time we have available, maybe we could have some dialogue there. And with that, I think I'd like to hopefully leave this meeting with the engineering issues narrowed and potentially some of the traffic issues narrowed with an eye towards submitting an updated plan set that hopefully addresses some of the peer review comments that remain open after tonight's hearing, two weeks prior to the hearing that we have scheduled in December, and that maybe we can continue to narrow the open issues as we go along. So with that, I'm fine introducing the applicant's engineer just to describe in a little more detail what's shown on the plan, and then we could go to the board's peer review engineer. One of the other things that I just, I did want to bring up, and while I have them, Mike, I might as well take advantage of that, is since we're submitting a new plan set, so I think it might be appropriate to recap what this board is charged with under Chapter 40B, because we heard some comments during the last hearing to the effect that, you know, this is a no. This just isn't, isn't going to fly. It doesn't belong in Dayton, and it's not appropriate for development at this site. And what we need to keep in mind is, Chapter 40B for a qualifying proposal, which this is, it qualifies under Chapter 40B, and then we've agreed to limit our dividend to the project to 20% of total development costs, and we've provided for 25% of the housing to be dedicated to affordability under the standards required under Chapter 40B. And in doing that, we are allowed under the state law to bypass local zoning controls. So this board can't just say, no, we're gonna, we're gonna not allow this. And I think this board has been doing a good job in trying to focus on what the standards are under 40B, and that is issues of critical local concern. So critical issues that are unique to Dayton as a community and this particular project site. And the way the law reads in terms of the level of concern that this board would have to identify in order to uphold a local bylaw that would prevent the development from going forward is that public health and safety is imperiled. That's actually the word that's used in the regulation, is that there's an impairment of safety. As far as the design, the board would have to show that the design is seriously deficient. Again, these are the words in the regulation that's used. And, you know, lastly, as far as density and open space, you would have to show that the town of Dayton has a critical need for open space, that the project would lessen the availability of open space that's already critically deficient in the community. So with that, you know, the board is tasked with a difficult review process in trying to balance the needs of the community against Chapter 40B, which is a powerful state tool intended to encourage the construction of developments just like this. So now that we are looking at a new, slightly revised plan that provides for the varying housing typology that we had talked about during the last few hearings, just keep in mind what the board's charge is and what types of concerns we should be hearing from the neighbors as far as critical, critical need for open space, seriously deficient design issues, and local concerns that would imperil health and safety. So with that, I'll turn it over to the engineers, and they can describe the project in a little bit more detail, the revised grading in a little more detail on the plan, so.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So Cracker School of Jacob Driscoll Engineering here. I'm representing Stormbrake Homes for this project. Since the last time we were here, we have prepared our start plans for review by peer review engineer, showing up the lot layouts for the closed lots, for the, this is the some coming out portion, and rough terrain of the site. So, well, the stormwater areas. So now that we have the roads roughed in, we know the high points and low points are, we'll move on and start doing the, the rough drainage calculations, just to make sure that the basins are sized, the areas at the left of the basin are large enough to handle what will come in the final design. We'll provide that report, probably discuss with Peter when we'd like something like that, but probably before the next meeting. It's really, you know, a lot of grading and earthwork review on this plan as well, and came up with some other areas, ways to save fill, and how to grade up the site, create the spaces that we're looking for. Refine, obviously, the road lane network as well, and all that, you know, from the original plan that we had, which was the aerial plan, Tom, going to the landscape architect, took that and kind of made it, real made it, engineered. So that's kind of the overview. It's not a lot, even glamorous about it, you know, we got some one-on-one slopes, areas like this. We're showing through here where the force may would be, a pump station down in this area.
The board, I think, is struggling to fully understand what you're saying. Can you just maybe be a little bit slower in the presentation? I think people are just having a hard time catching on.
Okay. Overall, we just, we graded the site. We made sure that the roads worked as far as the road network and the curves of the road. We identified the high points and low points from where drainage will go, how we'll get the drainage to the basins, low points where the pump station will be for the sewer and the force may coming up to this area right here. We met with the sewer department, and, you know, we don't need to tie into the sewer and prove what they're made. And it's gonna be off of this first road up through here, because from here to here is a force may, a miserable force may, and then it goes gravity from here north. So it's really just refining the design, moving forward, figuring out what areas we'll need to go where as far as drainage, and pretty much that's what this plan shows.
I'll point out, if you look at the detailed grading sheet on Sheet 11, one of the requests that was mentioned at the prior hearing was to show, actually show on the plan a buffer towards Country Hill was one of the elements that we had added. So we did show that detail on the plan, a 10-foot no disturb, which is shown, says proposed 10-foot wide no-touch buffer along the Country Hill properties was one design element that was requested. The other element that was repeated was the request that we have a bus turnaround. So we did actually, even after the last work session we had, eliminate what was originally a proposed building in that area and provided for a turnaround at that location. So we added those two design elements based on feedback that we had received. I think, as Greg indicated, all of the stormwater management facilities shown on this plan, all the basins were sized preliminarily. We did see GZA's review, and obviously Mr. Williams can discuss that in a little more detail. A lot of these comments were with regard to more detailed stormwater management calculations to show the balance of pre-imposed development runoff. There was one area that was identified as a specific concern, which was, I believe, the catch basin adjacent to 800 Somerset, just because that was in close proximity to an adjacent property. And that's the type of detailed issue that we would be able to provide more detailed information on at this preliminary level. So keep in mind that these are preliminary plans. If there is a specific local concern unique to this site, for instance, a catch basin next to a house, then we can provide more detailed stormwater management information on that. But because there are wetlands on this property, we are required to fill out a stormwater management form as part of our notice of intent. So ultimately, the Conservation Commission and beyond that, the Department of Environmental Protection in Massachusetts can certify that we ultimately complied with the stormwater management regulations. So ultimately, as we've discussed throughout, these plans still have to go through the final plan process where we will provide a full stormwater management or stormwater calculation report that this board will get to review and the Conservation Commission will get to review. So as we turn it over to Mr. Williams for his comments, just keep in mind that if there are specific areas that this board wants additional information on, that they're concerned with, then we can identify those, and that's one of the things that we can submit before the next hearing to make sure we're able to balance pre- and post-development runoff or maybe even reduce post-development runoff in certain areas of the site. Also keeping in mind that the site abuts a large wetland area, which we depicted on the plan. So there is that general flow of water sort of towards this area as well, that it doesn't really present a local concern as far as flooding on a house next door, which is the type of unique thing that we would be concerned about. So with that, you know, perhaps we can hear from Mr. Williams and go from there.
Peter, when are you ready?
Yes. I realize that these are preliminary plans, but there, I think some of the issues that the proponent's attorney mentioned are some of the things that we need to address here. There are some areas where we do have water that could be sheet load offsite to everybody's properties. And I think this site, he had mentioned, mentioned that, you know, this site is adjacent to many wetlands, but also we have wetlands interspersed within the site. So it's very critical that we identify the flows and how high the water will stand within the property in a post-development condition. And that's why in my review letter, I have requested that, you know, drainage calculations be provided. One of these areas is, excuse me, let me get my bearings here. This area where we have the bus stop, this, there's water running down in this area and has to be conducted and conveyed over to this across, under the roadway here, to this other wetland so it can discharge from the site. Some of the means to move this water from here to here may, has the potential to impact adjacent properties. It can be properly designed, and I feel that this project has to prove that before moving forward. There's a number of things with the connection to the, to the street drainage system that will have to be vetted out, and I'm not sure that they'll let, let an increase of flows there. A lot of these things are requested because I don't have all the information. There's some further details of the designs that have to be provided as noted in my letter. But I think my understanding, what I heard now, was that prior to the next meeting, that this plan will be revised to address my comments and additional calculations provided so that we have some surety on the competence of the design. Is that correct?
So you made one comment, and I think ultimately this is for the board to decide with the advice of the peer review engineer and counsel as well. But the comment is that at this preliminary stage, we need to prove compliance with the stormwater management regulations, and that's an area that the Housing Appeals Committee is pretty clear that for preliminary plans, we just have to show that we can comply. All right? If there is an area where it's identified that we cannot comply, or it's an area of critical, critical local concern with regard to an adjacent property, then yes, the board is perfectly within its rights to ask for more detailed stormwater management counts for, or just additional information showing that that area is not going to present a safety risk at this preliminary level. But we do not have to prove compliance that the entire property balances pre- and post-development runoff. As a side, and I mentioned earlier, we have to do that regardless. We cannot move forward with this development unless we file a notice of intent with a stormwater management form, and Mr. Williams can attest to the process with the Conservation Commission that's ultimately determined that we do balance pre- and post-runoff. So at this stage, what I was proposing or what I mentioned was...
I don't think I said, I didn't mean to say that right now we have to do the pre- and post-balance, but I think we have to show that we have, the tension basins in certain areas are not overflowing, and some of the roots for the carrying of the water across the site have to be confirmed so that they're on, so that they are not, as you say, impacting everybody's homes.
Right. So the two areas, and I think that analysis or that inquiry is appropriate in the two areas you've identified, adjacent to 800 Somerset and near the area of the bus, bus stop there. So I think our plan in reviewing your notes is that we would make sure that we had additional sufficient data, that those were sized correctly. But, you know, going back in and doing every, sizing every basin where if, if at a preliminary stage it were a concern of overflowing, but it wouldn't necessarily impact anyone's safety, we ultimately have to make sure that doesn't overflow. So if we can't do it in the final design stage, that's when that would become a more, you know, obvious concern, and the project wouldn't go forward. So at this stage, the board shouldn't allow something that is an obvious critical defect that affects the neighbor, but if one of the other basins that, you know, is preliminarily from Edwards or from Jacob's Driscoll's point of view is sized correctly, that wouldn't necessarily hold us up at this stage. So I think that's probably a discussion we can have more of tonight, and maybe if we get a better sense of, because I'm still hearing Mr. Quinn just prove that every basin isn't going to overflow. I don't think that's necessarily a requirement at this preliminary stage. I think if there are ones that present a critical concern...
Well, I think if you can address the comments in my letter, then I think you're, you're doing well.
Okay. And we definitely had planned on doing that. Having received this, we do plan to submit some additional calculations. So I think at the next hearing, if the calculations that we present still leave some concern in your mind as to critical issues of health and safety, then we have that discussion on the next hearing, and maybe we go through one more iteration.
Certainly. And your engineer, I'm sure the board wouldn't mind if the engineer talks to me about questions concerning my comments to make sure that they understand that. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's, that's what we're planning to do.
I'll take the mic.
The other one while we're on the subject of the peer review is, there was, the one that stuck out to me, I went through my sort of shorthand notes, was landscaping and lighting plans, and the comment is landscaping and lighting plans should be provided for the entire project. Again, at this preliminary stage, we've provided a schematic depiction of what we're intending for the individual lots. I think at this point, we would like some guidance as to what the board would like to see as far as lighting for a project like this, because a lot of times it's in the discretion of the board as to what they want. Some boards don't want any lighting. They want a low lighting project where you don't have, say, street poles on, in front of every house, or a driveway pole that is, the owner's driveway light, but that it provides ambient light for the actual main roadway. So at this point, what we've proposed is very limited lighting, as you can see on Sheet 23 of the plan set. But we weren't planning at this stage to do a comprehensive show where every light pole is until we heard some additional information or some additional sort of concepts from the board as to what areas might be of concern. You know, for instance, I was involved in a project where there was one bridge crossing, and there weren't many houses nearby. So the board requested, you know, well, we want some safety lighting in that. Even if it's solar powered, we want just some lighting there, but we don't want lighting for the rest of the project. In looking at this development, we haven't, as a development team, identified any particular areas that, you know, we want to be concerned about lighting, but if there's some area that the board wants to talk about, then that's, that's some feedback that we could incorporate in the next plan set.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if the board members were interested in hearing, just kind of talk through all of Mr. Williams' comments, because it may be helpful. I understand they have the document in front of them. I know you've made that available for the public, but perhaps you just wanted him to keep reviewing the rest of his comments, just so they're aware that we recognize that the developer is intending on responding to those, but I think it's just worthwhile for him to make that, the rest of that presentation if the board is interested.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. If you're ready to do that now, or Peter, if you want to hear more first, how you like to do that, would you like to continue with your feedback?
I could provide the feedback right now.
Sure.
So as I mentioned earlier, this, the site is a densely developed and has a number of weapon resource areas with interspersed throughout this throughout the site, and therefore the, as I indicated, the, we feel that there should be some drainage analyses provided to confirm that there's no impact to the adjacent properties, the buildings, and the wetlands, and the erosion, you know, that the site is properly maintained. There are a couple of sites that have a potential where the grading from other areas of running along squalls where they could have diverted to some of the adjacent, such as number 80, number 800 Somerset Ave. The, and that goes to, goes further into some of the additional calculations for the infiltration basin. My comment number four is that the project proposes on the Strawberry Lane, the northern entrance road, that the... entrance road, that the drainage system be directly connected to a catch basin on the side of the road. Typically, that is not a, considered an acceptable procedure, and I doubt that the Mass Highway Department would accept, accept that sort of connection, that there would have to be a catch basin to catch basin connection, which better catches the flows and has better stormwater treatment. And addition, there's some length at the beginning of Strawberry Lane where the road runs freely down to Somerset Ave, and I would feel more comfortable, and I'm sure that they would have to do it for their highway permit, curb permit, to prove that there is not additional runoff being shed to Somerset Ave. There's also a, on the, there's these plans that, it would be easier to, I'd have to say, it'd be easier to do this, there was one plan that had the whole site on it, but it's time to switch back and forth between the plans. There is on the, on the lower entrance road, Cranberry Road, there's a proposed detention basin. There's no real profile, and it's adjacent.
I'll also quickly just mention, at the last hearing, there was some concerns stated that people were unable to see the plan and get a good, up close look at it. So I know the board was kind enough to actually print multiple copies of the submissions that were made, but the applicant actually, and I think we mentioned we were going to do this at the last hearing, uploaded these plans and some links to the video that we had showed at the last hearing, as well as the video of both an existing project that depicts some of the housing we're proposing, as well as a fly-through of what the proposed house would look like for this development. And we've provided those links via QR code, so if you use your cell phone, you can just click on the QR code, and it'll take you right to the video. If anybody has trouble with that, Owen from the development team can help you figure out how to use the QR code, but it's all available online for anyone looking at home. You could probably find it through the town's website as well, we could get a link to that as well.
Thank you very much for that.
It actually has to collect within a square of a detention basin within this little narrow strip between this homeowner's property and the proposed roadway. There's no profile for that, and I think there's a number of comments that I have here that address, that talk about, you know, providing better grading and a drainage fill in this area so it doesn't impact the adjacent property. Number of these comments are in here because they're my standard stated comments, and I make them even though these plans are quote preliminary, I put them as reminders, and they can be addressed in later, but emergency, infiltration and detention basins should be provided with emergency outlets. That is, this should be a secondary outlet in case the normal outlet for the basin is clogged, is another way for the basin to drain the water without overtopping and breaking the burn or the protection around the basin. Another item, it's, it's within the rules and regulations for subdivisions for the town, but I include it here because it's good engineering practice. The plan should show all the detention basins discharge, usually with a pipe out of the basin, and a lot of times the elevations, the existing elevations are not shown on the plans, and because sometimes they're not measured, and I make it a practice to make sure that it is shown on the plan so that there's no issue later in construction with the project. I requested, because I was, you know, I felt it was, it should be brought up about the landscaping and lighting plans, and that will be up for the board to make the decision at that point. Depending on what, how, how much excavation and work the project does, it may be subject to an earth removal project. Another thing that I just mentioned as a cautionary and to keep in mind idea. So I have a number of comments which actually address sewer issues, but I have them to be complete, that is, they should, you know, identify the estimated flows that the project would generate, and have to have the project comply with the sewer department regulations. Another thing I didn't see on the plans, and again, don't want to get lost in the process, that there should be sidewalk ramps for handicap accessibility at all intersections and crossways. They're not shown at this time. I have asked for the hydraulic calculations because a lot of these basins are very close to buildings, they're surrounded by wetlands, and failure of the basin could cause some significant damage, I believe, in the end there. There's a, a number of water protection zones within the site, and I felt that they should be shown on the plan, and the applicant should identify any potential restrictions that these zones may incur on the project. Although, and it was good to see, test pit data was provided on the plans, but I could not find a reference to see where these were taken, and, you know, so I could confirm the elevations and the impact that they could have on the design of the infiltration basins. They can limit the depth that the basins can go to, and so that is a critical item in the final design. There's, I have a couple of comments discussing the, confirm that the, the capacity of the downgrade drainage system is sufficient to handle the additional flows and flows of the existing facility. I also feel that there's a number of drainage points, and this should be, at least in the final drainage calculations, often a site will drain off in different directions, and some towards existing facilities and developments, and those are critical and should be examined. And I think the other, the other thing that I like to see, and this is again a final design item, but I keep it, I keep it in my comments, is that the, it's critical that although the drainage system, the piping and everything can handle it, but those grates you see in the road, the catch basins, they often have less capacity depending how they're situated within the roadway, and sometimes the roadways could flood if they're not properly laid out, and that's another thing that they have to provide the calculations to confirm that the roadway, the inlets to the catch basins have enough capacity to allow the water to get into the drainage system. And I think I had another cautionary one, depending on the design and groundwater, mounting calculation may be quite, groundwater mounting calculation may be quite for the infiltration basins, to ensure that there's a proper separation of the water in the basin and the groundwater and the ground so that they don't cross contaminate and actually maintain the capacity of the basin. I think that's basically all, there's a couple that are a little bit out of order, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer. If something comes up later, I'd be glad to answer.
Does anybody have anything else on the board right now? Not yet. Just from my question for against the board too, what are you guys' thoughts on the, on the lighting? I know that was something that would be discussed in terms of, do you guys see any areas for concern, in particular with this specific location in the project?
Mr. Chairman, I think, it sounds funny coming from me since I can't see the lighting, but anyway, go with it. I think that knowing the developments that currently exist in this developer in this town, with the concerns that I've heard are wherever there's a turn within the development, and even if it's a minor turn, there needs to be some kind of a lantern or lighting. Again, whether it's the, what we consider the standard street light, or whether it's some kind of a silver type of light that's in the ground, but there needs to be something that identifies regular turns so people know where they are. Also, similarly for people walking at night on the sidewalk, once they're defined, so that people know where the sidewalk edges are and not, and where they end and where they start. It doesn't need to be, I don't think anyway, and I can stand corrected by others, that we think we want something lit up like a city, little city, so that you can see the bright lights from 10 miles away. But I do think for the residents who are physically there, it's important to have the residents who have visitors coming to know where turns are and where sidewalks are. So if that's mitigated by putting something in all the different turning points, as well as illuminating the bus area and those types of places, then I think that that's valid.
All right, thank you. Greg, do you have something you?
Well, I was just looking at drawings here, if you can use the old Boston style, fire danger code, old Boston style lighting poles. President Johnson stated that on all the corners as well as the photography, it goes up and down, but we also have to keep consideration, you know, what is blowing into everyone's windows too, going down around the back. I believe we had a light pole committee in town that should need involved, to tell people where this would be. We do have a committee involved with that, so they know better how far apart lighting should be. I really do. Before we decide all the lighting and stuff, we should get in hold of the fire department, make sure that there's not any apparatus way making radiuses. Obviously, where the bus turnaround is going to be, if that does stay there due to the elevation photography being fine, if that's going to be there, definitely have that illuminated. And again, we just don't want to be putting any kind of lighting in spots where it's going to deflect and go into some of the existing butters, we have to keep that into consideration as well. And you stated something to me off, off the record on this thing, when I'm talking about lighting. You got rid of a few homes in order to put the bus turnaround. What type of homes did you remove?
There was an additional, what we refer to as the condo, the condo building there. I believe it was six. And again, that, that was the plan that was presented at the work session.
Right, I just try to keep up with all my notes.
Yeah, it was key recorded in where the bus turnaround is.
These Boston lights, these are all underground lighting, I take it everything's underground, not going to have any telephone poles, and it's all underground. It's pretty much all here at this moment. So we lost six, six units. How many bedrooms did we lose in those six units? Considered, were they two bedroom, three bedroom, two bedroom, we lost 12, 12 bedrooms?
I just want to confirm what you presented at the last public hearing, is the same number of units that were presented in that schematic plan, right?
Yes, from the last hearing, correct.
Okay, so we have no more current questions on the, the lighting and the drainage and everything. Are you guys prepared to discuss the housing styles and the architectural plans right now? Or is there anything else you want to go into first?
We, we could show, and again, I think we showed, we did a presentation on that at the last hearing. We were also prepared tonight to have Mr. Scully, who's our traffic engineer, just discuss some of the issues that they've identified as open, at least between the traffic engineers. So maybe if I turn it over to Bill Scully, he can just briefly identify some of those open issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name's William Scully, we're major international affiliates and the traffic consultant for this project. Since the last hearing I was at, which probably is two hearings or so ago, we've updated the traffic report to reflect the latest plans, number of key lists, and attempted to address the first set of peer review comments that we had received prior to finishing the updated report. We have been coordinating with the peer review consultant, going over the updated report, going over their comments, our responses, and we believe we've addressed most of the comments and have a few open items, and really, there's not that many, but they include, well, and even before that, some of these keep following back to Somerset Ave as a state DOT roadway, they will need to be curbed up. So some of these things we can address to an extent, but will need to be concurred review DOT and get their concurrence or, or their recommended action. One was on site distances. We went out and double-checked everything, we're comfortable that we meet the criteria. I believe peer review concurs, however, they'd like us to provide some sightline plans that become part of the project. That would show where vegetation and clearing has to be removed to ensure proper site distances. So the plans haven't been drawn out yet for sightline. They can be prior to the next meeting, or I think the peer review consultant is okay even if they've done by the time we go to a DOT permit request, but so we can do it whichever way the board wants. Travel speeds, I think we did talk about that the last time I was here. We all would probably love to see slower travel speeds as you get towards Center Street. But again, DOT owns the road, they set all speed regulations on that road. In our particular project area is where the posted speeds were in that transition area of 45 mile per hour or 40 mile per hour. Our data that we collected shows, I would say, general compliance with the 45 mile per hour posted. About 90% of the motors are going probably 50 miles per hour or less, averaging about 45 mile per hour. And again, we took our measurements in the vicinity of the, of the project where really you'd be 45 mile per hour, and expect that. But we did, we've been talking about that, possibly a speed feedback sign, especially in the southbound direction, to start to slow people, not only as they approach our site, but really as you're approaching the town hall area, the post office area, the Center Street. But it's still, we'd need DOT approval to put anything within the right of way, but we've talked about it in the project team, and we're comfortable trying to do that, and can talk to DOT about that as we go through the permit process with them. Large vehicle maneuvering within the site, so peer review has requested that we demonstrate that using some design software, testing fire apparatus and school bus, and it still needs to be done, we can do that prior to the next meeting. And in the last, the last, probably more, again, important open item is the intersection of Somerset, Center Street. We've shown that our project doesn't really change the, the condition of that intersection with the project, it's the same under the no build to the build. The peer review consultant asks us to just look at that and see what kind of ideas might, might be there for some improvement to that location. I think for the most part of the day, it's, it's fine, we know at the evening peak hour, people are coming off the highway, heading back through town or to town, so in the westbound direction, Center Street backs up a bit. But again, it's a DOT signal, they control what is there and what happens. Center Street is a fairly narrow right of way, so there's not really any widening kind of thing you could do on Center Street. Signal equipment probably is aged, it doesn't have some features that you have today, like pedestrian push buttons and, and maybe a modern, efficient signal controller. So that would be something that, in our, in our opinion, I mean, the town could touch base with DOT and try to get this thing going and on the list. There are handicap ramps, while there's ramps there, they don't meet today's standard for handicap ramps. So, you know, this, this will clean up and updating of that location that, that is probably warranted. And again, it being a DOT location, it's their responsibility, but probably no one has pressed them on it, so that would be something to, to consider. And we'd be happy to, you know, bring these items up, and we'll continue working with the peer review consultant on maybe a laundry list of actions that the town could send over to the district highway. And I think that's it.
There's one more, uh, point that the board was concerned about, and I, I think you addressed it in the sightline discussion, but there was concerns about the change in elevation and the, what's been referred to as the dip in the road. Can you just talk about how we have a conversation with the board's peer review on the new one? On that issue?
Um, well, well, I mean, we went out, we did additional field evaluation, uh, at the site drives, took both site drives, both on the approach as well as, uh, if you were leaving the site drive, and, um, I can look up the number, but in both directions, in both site, in site locations, uh, we easily meet the, uh, the site distance criteria. So the dip, it's not much of a dip out there, but, uh, we, probably the biggest thing is if you leave the site drives, we know that there's going to be vegetation and, uh, clearing that has to take place, and based on our preliminary analysis, uh, at this point, um, that can be done within our property and state layout and not affect any private property. So, um...
I have one question.
Yes?
Uh, that's, uh, the problem with the, uh, the crest. The crest that comes out of the development, you go out of your car, you take a left on Route thirty-eight, you head towards Tonne. The crest that goes over the top of the hill and comes down, like before country hill drive, that's where the city concerns, uh, cars come over, they come over, and there's been a fatality here that I own.
Okay, so we now, uh, let's see, make sure I have my locations right. Um, we measured at minimum on the first drive, site drive one, which I believe that is the northern one, which would be the closest one there, would be, uh, we measured four hundred thirty to four hundred fifty feet, uh, depending on direction, uh, on the approach, we need minimum three hundred sixty feet. So, I mean, we, we meet the criteria, we exceed the criteria, we meet for fifty miles an hour, um, so, a- as I said, yeah.
That's addressed, that's called, uh, the crest is down, I mean, um, valley is where you're coming out of, that's where it goes over that hill?
I mean, we've, I mean, we've done field measurements, uh, visual and then measured along to see what we've got, and feel pretty confident.
Yeah, I think, uh, just to kind of tie together what Bill had described, and, and this is all in a report that was submitted to the board, so, and it's available for the public as well, I know, uh, the board's assistant uploaded it, uh, but that laundry list he was referring to is a list of things that, forget about this development, it's just, as far as the development vital stats go, the entrance, the additional traffic, it's well within tolerances, but we've identified what is an existing safety concern about the roadway as it exists today and as it will exist after the development. The laundry list is how we as the developer can work with the town to maybe go to the DOT to come up with, do we put an additional sign here, do we put a traffic speed or a speed feedback, uh, module on the road where those have been shown to actually reduce speeds, uh, along the traveled way? So we, we're gonna continue to work putting that list together, uh, but I think as far as the vital stats for the project go, we're within tolerances, we've identified, or we've, we've specifically looked at in detail the, the local concerns that have been raised, uh, for the, for this particular site. So, thank you.
Uh, John, can you, go ahead.
Um, I think I probably don't need a mic, so, could you tell me, um, you said that you were identifying the speeds and how fast the average speed was of the cars when you checked, what time of day was that?
Um, well, we had the counters out there for forty-eight hours, so...
Was that a continuous?
Correct, yep.
What, you know, the, the, the vast majority of traffic is probably going to be between, what, six and eight thirty in the morning and four to six thirty or seven at night? Did you get traffic speeds targeted at that time that you could tell us about?
Um, I can, but, uh, I'd have to look in, look up detail, but the detail is in the report, um, so when we have, um, speed measurement, we're doing forty-eight hours, we've got data for every hour of two straight days, we've got, um, I believe when I looked quickly during the peak hours, it, it was reflecting fairly similar. Now, remember, we had the machine up by the site, so, um, at that point, you're away from the signal and traffic is flowing, call it fairly normal, um, so the peak hour, the peak periods will tend to reflect across the day, across the...
You still need to answer the question.
Well, uh...
If you cannot answer it.
I, I... Sorry, could you repeat the question then, because I thought you was answering.
The question was, what was the speed of the traffic flow between seven and nine in the morning and forty-seven in the night?
All right, we'll dig that out.
As well as what was the, does it also measure the number of vehicles?
Yes, those traffic counters are actually pretty impressive, uh, the data that it collects.
They may be, but I think it's more than four years ago, but, let me, let me move on, we could potentially have information at the next meeting. I don't know if this is possible, so I'm going to ask, but is it possible to install a device under the ground, at least inside the development, because I know dealing with DOT on the road is different, so that if a person is, when a person pulls up to pull out, it generates a warning light or something that at least tells people on the main road, slow down a little bit? Whether they do or not is a separate issue, you can't control everything, but at least it generates some kind of a warning light, is that possible? Would the developer do that?
Yeah, so again, I, I think Bill mentioned that, and, and you've identified it's a DOT roadway, I am unfamiliar with that device, I've never seen it outside of the city, I know, uh, they have it when you're exiting garages in the city for pedestrians, uh, but the, the element that we, we have seen on projects is the continuous speed feedback, so it's not tied to a vehicle exiting, it's just trying to increase safety, generally speaking, and I think that's what, uh, the traffic report has concluded, is that, uh, whatever safety issue that exists is, is an existing safety issue, and how can we, uh, improve traffic safety along the roadway all the time, not just when a vehicle is exiting, which is probably why they don't, I've never seen one of those on, on a proposal. So I think the answer, Mr. Gill, is that they don't exist, um, at least as far as these types of projects are concerned.
If we could get the other information.
I'll get the other information for the next hearing, would that be, I mean, I can take through the, the data's there, I would just have to collect, uh, a...
The next one is good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, are there any more questions amongst the board regarding, um, the traffic study that was discussed just now? Margery, do you have anything regarding that, or Peter?
I, I don't quite at this time, I'm, I'm comfortable working with the consultant.
I'm okay right now. Is there any additional plans before the next meeting, is that correct?
So I think, uh, what we discussed regarding was, uh, the site triangles, uh, at the entrances, so those, as far as traffic, what additional plans, the, the traffic, and, and the turning radius.
Yeah.
So those two plans. Answer your question?
No, I thought you were talking in general, I'm sorry.
Oh, we are also, yes, uh, yeah, I was just, with respect to traffic, yes, but you are going to get some updated detail, like, and specifically, you know, the areas that you've identified a concern.
Um, okay, so I had one question, just moving on, um, from the traffic, since no one else had any questions, um, regarding the, um, architectural plans that were submitted, the one with the, um, I'm sorry, I have it here, the cottage unit, um, I noticed that, um, according to this that I have in front of me, there is no, um, bedroom on the first floor, and there, it looks like, um, a master suite, a bedroom, and then a bedroom or office on the second floor. Um, and just from previous discussions, I was, uh, under the impression already, I understood that the cottage would be geared more towards, um, people wishing to settle down, the elderly or upstart couples who aren't ready to have a full, uh, house or, or start a family in this particular unit, um, so I thought the, it's going to be limited to a master bedroom on the first floor and maybe a second bedroom or office. I just noticed that this plan was a little different than, than what was discussed for those units, I'm just, uh, adding, uh, curiosity, um, if you could address that.
Sure. This, this plan is, um, offers, uh, a very, two, two variations, and the one was not, what did you, we got to submit that to you?
Okay.
The same, the same up exterior, the same everything, uh, the, the second alternative, which has a master bedroom on the first level, uh, offers one car garage, still there are two parking spots in the driveway, but the one car garage, the other car, what used to be a car garage, becomes a master bedroom.
Okay.
First floor bedroom.
Okay.
It's, it's just a different variation of it, but that was submitted to you, we'll, we'll submit that to you tomorrow.
Okay, um, just, I guess, just thinking about thinking ahead, I, I don't, I don't know how the board feels, I personally would prefer to see all of the cottages, like, um, the, the one bedroom, because I know one, uh, discussion that, uh, Mallory felt, and I, I agree too, is that, you know, we wanted some units to, and just to, to limit, especially the burden on, on the schools, we wanted some units to be geared towards, um, the elderly population or, um, couples or, uh, families wishing to, you know, start off small, um, I don't know, how do you guys feel about that, but I, we'd like to see those cottages geared more towards that, I don't know how you guys feel? Go ahead, John, if you have something?
What I was, what I was going to say was, um, I think for seniors, I, this raises two questions, number one, a lot of seniors need to move out of where they were, or their, or their rental property for that matter, because they can't do stairs. So if this is really going to be to some extent adequate to be able to supply some of our seniors in, in town with new housing, or housing they can live in and move around in, then we need to have master bedrooms on the first floor. Secondary to that is, is there anything right now specifically in the plans that is going for any of these units to be fully handicap accessible? Because my concern again is for wheelchair accessibility, as in, as opposed to having it as an after the fact, if you get into potential wheelchair accessibility, then we're looking at having to have wider doorways, et cetera, that would have to require first, first floor clearance for lavatory, for showering, for bedroom and so forth, so if you could address that, because I think that needs to be built in here somewhere.
Yeah, the both of your questions, um, I'm sorry, uh, I missed, I missed your, your questions, and, 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 uh, let me address Mr. Gill first, the, the, which I think the answers, addressed both of your questions. Um, like I said, that, that cottage plan does have a, uh, an option depending on who the prospective buyer is and what they, what they want, either a master suite on the first level or on the second level, it's their choice, and, uh, and we'll, like I said, we'll be glad to, if you give you that plan. Now, as far as handicap accessibility, um, all the cottages, uh, can be handicapped, but I, 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 I'm not sure, I'm not aware of what steps we take so that we meet them.
My, my, my concern is that whether it's somebody who is going to purchase at market rate...
Yeah.
...or somebody who is going through the forty-five percent of the affordable units...
Yeah.
If one of those persons putting in an application, making an offer has a wheelchair, for example, a wheelchair can climb up three or four stairs.
Right.
And wheelchair needs wider berth for the door, it needs wider berth for the doors inside.
We can accommodate all of that, all, all the, all the cottage units can accommodate all of that.
So you could accommodate for that as long as, as long as it's pre-construction?
Correct.
So it would have to be, I guess, I, what I'm wondering there then is if you were to make anything handicap accessible, and it has to be pre-construction, and the application of the ownership process hasn't begun yet, how do you account for that?
We don't, we, we cannot build something that's handicap accessible be, before, you know, we actually don't, we rarely build a house as handicap accessible on spec, because the general pub, public, public doesn't want handicap accessible, but if, if somebody wants a handicap accessible, we'll be glad to adapt it to, to their needs.
Is that going to change the cost?
It depends on what, what their needs are, no, I mean, normally, just, just a ramp to get, to get the wheels in and just over...
But if it's not just a ramp, unfortunately, if somebody really needs a wheelchair, a true wheelchair user, doesn't just need a wide ramp to get up to the door...
They need wider doors.
They need wider doorways, they need no thresholds, they need showers, stalls, or lavatory facilities that can be, you know, that are...
And, and it may, it may have an impact on the cost, yes.
Could you provide us with some of that information potentially, if you would, if you want to change it each way?
So, I, I just, um, Mr. Gill, for the affordable units, just to clarify what the requirements are, the affordable units, if, uh, a buyer of an affordable unit is handicap accessible, the applicant is required to accommodate that unit. The market rate units, all right, are, they're built, as Mr. Hashem said, on spec, so, um, if the buyer of one of those units wanted to structure the home to provide for handicap accessibility, then if the numbers worked out, we would, we would create that home in such a way as to allow for handicap accessibility. Who the buyer of that home then turns around and sells it to, um, at that point, it's up to whoever buys it as to whether or not they want to do a renovation to provide for handicap accessibility, but I think what you're saying is, you're, you're asking whether we would commit to building a certain number of homes to provide for handicap accessibility without an imminent handicap accessibility requirement for a buyer, is that what you're asking?
That's partly what I'm asking, I understand that it's a more difficult concept, it may not be possible for the, the full rate homes, and I understand the parameters of that, the, the logic, even though I may not like it, makes sense. My concern for the affordable units at least, because the affordable units tend to be geared more towards people with disability potentially, or towards seniors potentially, that in those cases, if the units are built and then they go to lottery, and then, you know, they go out, you know, for first available and so forth, but the units are completed, if a person in town needs, needs something that's wheelchair accessible, there's no option for them, they're already built, they're already done.
Not for the initial buyer though, for the initial buyer, i- if it's an initial buyer of the unit. Now, twenty years from now, if we have twenty-five percent affordable...
I'm not, I'm not, I know where you're going with that, I'm not talking about twenty years from now...
Okay.
I'm talking about for the new construction, because my question then...
Fisher's responsible for that.
Right, so my question is, if Fisher is built, if built, I guess, we, let's put it this way, do you intend to build the affordable units and then have them available for lottery, et cetera, or do you intend to have a lottery first and then build based on what you get for response?
The former.
That makes a difference, I think.
The former, but if the applicant for the already built home requires handicap accessibility, then the developer is required to then go back and make it handicap accessible in that instance, we'd have to...
Right, that, that could become very expensive for the developer too.
But that's our problem.
And I know you can say that's the problem for the developer, and I respect him for doing that and for, for being willing to do that, I'm just wondering if it's possible to at least potentially agree to build, for example, even two of the affordable units geared towards people with disabilities?
Yeah, well, so we wouldn't do that on spec, because it, it actually, and I know it's more likely that you might have someone with a disability for the home, but there are two issues there, one, um, it's not all the time, we might go through the whole lottery process and not have a disabled person, and number two, we can't predict what everyone's disability is, so, you know, we can't provide for handicap accessibility to suit someone's needs versus another, so, and it's why we don't do it that way.
And to be clear, at least, if I, if I take it to the next step, would be, if an applicant applying for the affordable housing units, required ramp, had a requirement for a ramp, had a requirement for larger front door, had a requirement for no thresholds, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, had a requirement for first floor bedroom, requirement for handicap lavatory with full accessibility and wheelchair accessibility, if that applicant meets the criteria for the program, is it my understanding that Fisher would, without an additional cost, and I want to be really clear on that, go in and make that unit fully accessible?
Yes, he has to comply, no, no cost to the applicant, it doesn't raise the cost for the buyer of that home.
That's why I just want to be clear.
Oh, that's very clear, yeah, we, we have to comply with the law.
I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that, I want the people here to be aware of that too, that, that potential exists, that there's no limit to the number of applicants who could potentially meet that criteria.
I appreciate you thanking me for doing that, but it's not, it's not out of my good heart that I have to do it, but you would do it.
No, I mean, no, you, I, I, I think, you know, in your... No, I mean, no, you, I, I, I think, you know, and you, you're working very good about those types of things. I'm not disputing that. What I'm, what I'm just wanna make sure of is that we're clear that if that potential comes up and it could, and it's more likely if we're looking at that housing for seniors as well, that that's an available process. If the person meets the criteria, that will be done and that, you know, that's, that's openly stated, that's all.
Oh, absolutely. It's, it's a very powerful process.
I have a better answer to your question than we have the answer to yet. The lottery happens way before we, we start building the houses. Uh, and then each, each participant takes, gets a number and, and gets qualified. And, uh, you know, we may build the houses, but we, we know who slotted for those houses as we build them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, one question I, or a thought I have for the board. Um, with these cottage styles, like I stated earlier, that the intention was to, uh, create more of a quote-unquote, um, mixed style of houses within the development.
Yeah, in order to create a mixed style for the development and to, uh, gear towards more some, uh, younger couples and handicap, uh, or elderly couples, uh, I should say. Um, that was the purpose of a cottage style. But if more than one variation is offered, uh, there, on the plan that we have, there are twenty-six units of these cottages. If we offer more than one variation, it's conceivable all of these twenty-six cottages, they could all choose to have the three bedrooms. At that point, that kind of negates the purpose. At that point, there're just no different, I shouldn't say no different. But at that point, that's just having more three-bedroom homes. That's not so much, um, more mixed use. I mean, conceivably, they could all turn into three-bedroom homes and no longer the, you know, master bedroom on the first floor. Correct? Am I, am I, I don't know, is, is, is there, I'm not saying right now, of course, we can decide on this, but is there any kind of stipulation we can put in saying that we would require the cottages to only be, um, that's, uh, the style that, that's what I'm discussing? I just would hate to see, uh, you know, the attempt of this to turn into a mixed style and all of a sudden now we have twenty-six more three, uh, three-bedroom homes in town.
So I was just gonna ask earlier. When you, when you were talking, that's why I asked about the per bedroom, how many units we've done lost on the other unit that were talking this. It was actually increasing from what we did before, we're gonna be having by putting that third bedroom in there. Even though they listed as a ten, it still could be a bedroom.
Uh, bedroom, one office?
Yeah, office.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I just wanna, I'll talk to Marguerite and I guess Peter and Cheryl on this one. Well, what do you guys feel like? I mean, do you, do you all understand what I'm saying about the, that cottage style very well? We could all end up being more three-bedroom houses? I mean, is, can we put in, in the application in order to reduce that, that we require this to only be the master bedroom on the first floor?
So, I mean, I've seen conditions created and I don't think it's out of, um, out of the ordinary for this board to talk with the developer and come up with something that would either potentially limit the total number of bedrooms with regards to certain styles of homes or say the minimum number of this style home will be used. The board has used these types of conditions before. If down the road in the course of development, it looks like this is becoming a particular problem. Um, certainly developers have come back to us to ask for modifications, but it does help the board ensure that there is kind of a reality of what's being presented as happening, that all of, you know, a minimum number of every style home is being built. And what that minimum number is can sometimes be vetted as the board is talking about conditions with the developer. Um, I think we've had similar types of conditions in prior permits and this developer is probably familiar with those. So I think it's fair for this board to kind of clue the developer in right now on saying that's probably something we're still interested in here in, um, having be a part of a permit. Because especially when you're getting a presentation of, um, multiple styles and varieties of homes and units and you appreciate that this is a little different than what's been built and decked before and you're trying to ensure that the vision you're being presented with is actually what plays out. So, no, I think those are not unreasonable conditions to talk about when we get to that phase of detail and I'll make a note myself.
Yeah.
That's what I was getting. I know a lot of effort went into our side, town manager's side and their side to provide more of a, a mixed style. And I would just hate to see those twenty-six cottages essentially just be three-bed, not just the style, not the physical style will change, but now those that were gonna be geared towards a different, you know, uh, population applying, uh, applying to live there. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, looking to live there and now all of a sudden we're looking at more three-bedroom homes. That's all. I, I wanted to make sure that our, our vision was, was adhered to and hopefully, uh, kept throughout the whole process.
When our first meeting, we had something, it said three hundred bedrooms and then we dropped to two hundred and eighty-two bedrooms. You know, it was a hundred and sixty units to ninety-two units to fifty-two, so it's a hundred and ninety-four pieces now. So I don't know why we have three bedrooms. That's actually increased our bedroom load by our first meeting. So that is what the initial.
So the other thing I'll, I'll point out is that the board does have the ability to, um, to talk about the proposed, uh, home styles and architectural units that are being presented and indicate that perhaps there's, um, a particular style that they're not interested in for whatever reason. So that's also an area that this board could provide some comments on.
Okay, perfect. That's a, uh, thank you.
Just to speak to what you were talking about earlier, um, we've done all the types of units that are shown here. Um, just by sheer style of the unit, there's a very different buyer who's looking for a single-family lot with a yard, deck, whole nine yards versus this cottage-style units. Again, we have forty units, similar units, uh, in Norfolk that we've done, where you, it's, we could do two bedrooms or three bedrooms. Ninety percent of the homes are, uh, are two bedrooms, people choose. And the ten percent that don't, a lot of them are retirees who have two or three, uh, kids who come and visit regularly and they wanna have a spare bedroom for each of them to come stay. Typically, so, so just by the sheer style of the unit, we find that, I mean, the people that pick the cottage units, what you have is usually a patio space on the side, maybe a small deck on the back. It's really, there's not a lot of room for kids to run around, you know, full age kids and things like that. But so the people who buy them drift towards the, hey, there's usually one couple living there and then they have a transient, either small child or older set of dogs.
I see what you're saying, right. I get it. I, I, I just think that that makes sense. If you're looking to start a family, have, you know, three or four kids, you want the yard, you want, that does make sense. I, I agree. I guess I, I just didn't want to see that those all turn into, uh.
That makes sense.
And that is particularly the case for a, a person who's seeking Dyson. Dyson is, you know, is a, is more, uh, country feel to it.
Yeah.
Versus a, a closer community like, like Wayman or Braintree.
Yeah.
So a person who's, who's desiring to live in Dyson with a family is gonna want a yard. Uh, but right, the person who, who's, who, who, who this style of cottage attracts is a person who is an empty nester or a young couple.
Right, right.
I just wanted to say something. On the first meeting, it came up as a three hundred bedroom unit, a lot of, uh, it dropped down to two eighty-two, but like you're coming in front of us, bring this back up. To the bedrooms, that's what I want to, that's what I'm concerned. So you're just looking to it. So we'll see what, to make sure our numbers are correct.
Okay.
Because, uh, back in October November, when we first, our first meeting, we talked about the forty-five permits that we had. We talked about three hundred bedroom bedrooms, now we're two hundred and eighty-two. Uh, how many units we were gonna have from a hundred and ninety-four, we could have one of us originally brought down. But now it looks like Clay Owens, we may have, we have more bedrooms.
Yeah.
That's what I, what, this is the concern I, I know I have. I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. And I didn't see that Zach was saying on the second floor.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it and we're happy, we're happy, like Marguerite said, you know, we're happy to have a discussion as to, okay, well, let's put so many units, two bedrooms, so many units first. The, the, the only problem I have with restricting how many bedrooms, how many master bedroom we have on the first level is somebody may not want it and then, and, and somebody may want it. So, uh, you know, and I have to, you know, sync to the tune that the market wants.
I see what you're saying, right.
You know. Yeah, I, I. But, but I'm happy to engage in that discussion about the number of bedrooms or restricting how many bedrooms, you know, like certain houses will have so many bedrooms. We'll talk about that.
Right, I, I guess, it's, it's to clarify, lack clarify, but reword what I was saying before. I, I guess, it wasn't my main focus that the main bedroom stay on the first floor. It was the number of bedrooms overall. For you, I, yeah, everybody said it doesn't matter to me. No, it has to be on the first floor. The master suite has to be on the first floor. Of course not. And that's, that's unrealistic to, 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 you know, assume that every buyer is going to want that. It was a number of bedrooms. When I was looking at the plans, I was like, wait a second, why are you decreasing all of a sudden? But, okay, yeah, so that's an interesting, thank you. Uh, is there anything else on the board, uh, what's the board, um, specifically? I can shortly open the meeting up to the buyers if we don't have anything immediate that would like. Sure.
I have the traffic, um, part of this.
Sure.
The F X B, the traffic volume data, um, that actually has, I know, uh, I know you had asked about the time. That actually has the time. Is that the report you were using? Okay, so, cause it's from two thousand seventeen, correct? Well, it's dated two thousand seventeen.
No, so that's the center street volume, uh, the speed data, uh, later on in the F X.
Oh, further down.
So that.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll compile it.
Okay.
Also specifically on every.
Okay.
Just saying.
I mean, it does show the, the high traffic value of volume that we were there in the day, so I just wanted to see if that's.
The volume definitely is higher.
Yeah.
I think he was wondering if the speeds are changing.
Oh.
I know that, I know that there's gonna be higher traffic volume during those, those periods, but I'm concerned about the speed at those times too.
Okay.
With, you know, exiting and entering, seeing how that's gonna affect layout.
Right.
As well as sidelines.
Yeah, the information's in the report, but I'll pull it out. It'll be very easy.
Okay.
Summary form to give you the answer.
So if there is, um, nothing else, uh, immediate, um, amongst the board, I would like to take this moment to, um, open up the, uh, public input portion. Um, just as a reminder, um, when you're assigned, you're a member of the public to speak, um, you at least state your name for the record. We do require you to write your address. If you don't wanna state your address out loud for whatever reason, that is more than fine. Um, but just at least state your name out loud and make sure you at least write your, uh, address on the sign up sheet. That's there. So if there's anyone else that wishes to come forward, you can.
Anne Sukula, six thirty-one, Bray Terrace, North Dyton, Member of the Board of Selectment, Chairman of the Stormwater Committee. First, I have a request to the planning, uh, excuse me, to the zoning board. I'm hearing discussions tonight, uh, in response to, um, the town's engineers' responses to some information that was requested and about responses to Mr. Williams, their responses to the Conservation Commission. I'm officially, uh, formally requesting under the Public Records Law, any of our correspondence, plans, diagrams, or anything that had been provided to any official in this town about this development, that they be copied to the Stormwater Committee. I don't know how we got left out. The Stormwater Committee is the officially recognized committee in the community by the EPA relative to all stormwater matters. We've been in existence since probably December or January last year into this year. We have total, it was actually longer than that. We have total responsibility for filing the notice of intent. We have total responsibility for filing the town's MS fours. We have total responsibility for developing, maintaining, updating the town's stormwater management plan, the IDTE plan. And you name the plan, we're responsible for it. I don't know why we were left out of the loop, but I do make that request. We will work cooperatively with Mr. Williams, with the zoning board, with the Conservation Commission and any other board organization group in the community. But you gotta understand, stormwater is ours, okay? I know you've got some requests relative to stormwater. We will be involved in those discussions, working with other boards. So that's my first request. Now, the other information that I wish to bring forward. Uh, there was a mention about Center Street being narrow. You need to be aware that the town of Dyton has a sidewalk project planned for the south side of Center Street. I don't know how far you looked up, but the Center Street sidewalk plan will begin at one thirty-eight and go west and it will go to the approximate entrance of Stone Gate Landing. So it's going to encompass the south side, which is the, where our driveways are to the driveway to the school. And there is also another proposed driveway for, uh, exit from this building. So you may not be aware of that either, but, um, these, these boards do, so I'm just putting this out there. So there is going to be work done on Center Street and its, its sidewalk project. Shortly, I'll be meeting with, uh, residents about easements and what we have to do to acquire the easements to build that sidewalk. Um, when you were talking about street lighting, I would suggest, uh, first of all, are you familiar with dark skies and you, I, your, would your plans be in compliance with dark skies? Very good. Three thousand or less Kelvins on the lights? Because that's the latest recommendation. I also sit on the, uh, Mass Municipal Association Policy Committee on Energy and Environment. We had a presentation yesterday and this was the follow-up to, uh, the presentation on the lights and controlling the amount of blue light in reference to Kelvins. So that's something that needs to be looked at. I'm not concerned about what fixtures look like. Again, I'm talking about three thousand or less Kelvins. But I think all of you are familiar with the Berkeley-Dyton Bridge. And when that bridge was designed and those lights were designed, those are the kind of lights, meaning the light doesn't go into outer space. It's, the light falls where you want it to fall, whether as Mr. Gale's mentioned, for the personnel taking a walk at night or just driving down the road. So that's something to be concerned about. Um, the other thing I would mention, talking about, um, the traffic studies. I realize some of these things I'm bringing up on our Stormwater Committee, but I hold a few hats in town, so it's things I know about. Uh, you might wanna check and, and, uh, Ms. Skylison could do this for you. Last night at the Board of Selectment meeting, we had quite a discussion relative to traffic flow. One thirty-eight was one of them. Because I think you all know, we've had a number of complaints from residents about speeding in town and we've stepped up enforcement. And, um, we actually had Serpent do a traffic study. So one thirty-eight is one of the roads that was studied and that data is available. It'll tell you car counts. It will give you average speeds. It's a lot of good stuff and it's very current. We just got it. So I just pass this on to you. And, um, again, uh, any information that has been already given out, if you could, uh, have Ms. Skylison get it to, uh, adjust the, um, Ms., Mrs. Grassi at the Board of Health. She can collect all of it for us. So you won't have to be trying to catch up with committee members.
Um, so yeah, Nicole did, uh, did advise me that, um, Ross did pick up the binder when it first came in.
Okay.
So I guess, um, I just follow through with her and, and see if, if she has that. I would, I would assume she still has it. Um, but I, correct me if I'm wrong, they, they did drop it off with her, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, I think, what was the total number of applications we submitted? It was, you're twenty. Uh, but I just wanna be clear, there was no intent to, to leave the Stormwater Committee out.
Oh, no, and I'm not anticipating there was. I, I don't know if, I should explain. The Stormwater Committee is made up of one rep from the Board of Selectment. That's me. The Building Commissioner, the, uh, Planning Board is represented, the Board of Health. There were six of us, uh, Building Commissioner, the Highway Superintendent and Conservation Commission Chairman. So, and I will tell you this, as stormwater organizations go, we have been recognized, the town of Dyton has been recognized for having probably one of the best farm committees because of all of the organizations, committees, boards in town that have feedback. We don't step on one another's toes and obviously if it's clearly it's conservation, then Mr. Frenette and his committee takes care of that. But because we have this membership, uh, kind of all encompassing, uh, we managed to hit all the bases. And I don't know if any of them have attended any of these meetings. Um, I caught part of your, one of your meetings on Channel Nine and, uh, I was told that this meeting was taking place tonight and I'm the one who was available to come. So, no, there's no intent at all. I wanted you to be aware that we were. I wanted you to be aware that we work with Mr. Williams, with the zoning board, everybody else. I was listening to Mr. Williams ask his questions or talk about the things that he was needing, and I'm thinking to myself, it would be helpful if I knew what, what he was responding to, all right? But anyhow, going forward, we will need that information. Whatever you copy to this board or others, we expect to get a copy. And, uh, as I said, Ms. Skylison, she has, she'll know who to get it to. But you just need to be aware that this is another committee. It's another committee in town that's very heavily involved. When, when Stormwater was initially handled in Dayton back in two thousand seven, I'm the person that took that on, we had a number of, uh, assignments. Board of Health is totally responsible for Stormwater. But within the Storm, within that overview, we've also changed the structure of the Board of Selectment, Board of Health, and we've also changed responsibility. And when the EPA told us we had to come up with a notice of intent and saw what it encompassed, that's when we formed that committee, because it, it just, it's a nightmare. We got through all of it, we're working on it, and we're just, now we're a player in all of this stuff. So I just wanted you to know that.
Yeah, and this is a, a good opportunity, you know, since you're so familiar with the stormwater concerns in town. Are there any local concerns or local practices that Stormwater Committee has brought to bear with other developments that we should keep in mind when we respond to Mr. Williams?
Well, without knowing exactly what Mr. Williams was responding to, I know his answers, I don't know what the questions were. But again, when we get that information, or I have a chance to look at whatever Ms. Skylison has already given to Ross, Ms. Grassy, then we can, we can contact Mr. Williams. Or we can contact whatever the board is that we may have a question on.
Well, maybe this one.
But the, uh, to say, quite frankly, I think probably most of the developments that have been going on, this is the new one, they were all pre, certainly pre-notice of intent and pre note, pre-formation of the Stormwater Committee. It was the notice of intent to trigger the town to do something. Because the responsibility to do that was so large, we, quite frankly, not one person would handle it. So anyhow, um, that's how this all came about. Projects that are already ongoing, we were involved in those, okay? You're the first one to come along that I'm aware of. We've heard, we've had individual situations where we've dealt with individuals, but not projects. This is the first project.
Having gotten to the point in five years, you know, different, it was a federal concept that came in, I believe, referring to.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I think, just, and, and Attorney Mitchell can also clarify. I think part of it is, is the process to make sure that you receive a copy of all the applications that, or all the new plans that we filed. And then what would normally happen is if your committee got together, you would then provide feedback to this board, and this board would incorporate your feedback in the comments that Mr. Williams gives back to us.
Right, and, and I think, I think the important is, and our boards know this, Mr. Williams knows this. Stormwater has become so complicated that we formed a committee. All of our other boards in town, and we're quite friendly, including the Board of Selectment, they don't know all the stuff that we have to deal with relative to Stormwater. So that's why we have a committee to do it. So when a board is working on something and Stormwater comes up, I guess we're the resource. So we can discuss this back to it. The largest project we have right now, and I don't think zoning's been involved in it, is the expansion of the Aggie School campus.
No, not yet, no.
No, they've doubled the, the plan is to double the size of the campus, develop the whole north campus. And prior to that, there weren't any building projects like that in town. But when you look at giant projects that are not housing, yes, we're very heavily involved in that. We've had a number of meetings. We were even at formulation meetings when they were talking about, uh, the structure, what the buildings were going to look like, because the company got in touch with us and said, we want you in here early. And so the Building Commissioner and the Highway Superintendent and I were all there early on, and we brought in other boards and people as needed. So that's the biggest project we're dealing with now that is not a residential issue. And this is probably one of the largest building projects, school-wise, in this town of city. Because even if you think of the structure of the elementary or the middle school, then on as big as what's happening on Center Street, where the county is building that north campus. So that's another thing we're involved in.
All right, um.
So I'll put that out.
Yeah, okay, thank, I, thank you. John, do you have a question for Ms. Goulart?
I have just a quick comment and a question for Ms. Goulart, but not a quick comment. Just as a board member only and not knowing what goes in and what comes out sometimes, of course. I can tell you that I know when the original list came out of who was going to get the packets of the big binders and so forth, Stormwater was on there. Um, I do remember reading that it was on there, and then the list was, a notebook was probably dropped off that somehow didn't get to you.
Right, John.
But, but I also know that we have, um, start, you know, started reaching out to the, the different town committees, asking for input and asking for resource. I just want you to know that this is not, nobody here is trying to ignore any.
No, and that was not an intent. When I spoke, you expected what we need.
The question I wanted to ask you though is you, when you first started speaking, you were talking and making mention to the sidewalks on Center Street.
Yes.
And I wanted to know where or how you feel that relates to what we're doing. And I don't mean it in a negative way, I just want to understand something I don't seem to understand.
When the traffic was being discussed, there was a comment that, uh, Center Street is narrow, and I just wanted people to know, it's, it may be narrow when you look at it as a street to drive on, but once a sidewalk is added to it, you're, you're opening up the space because now you're providing walking space. So the, the travel lanes will be the same, but we are actually, if you will, widening up what would be public access, I guess you'd call it?
Right.
Yep.
All right, and is there anyone else amongst the public? Um, with, with, uh, Vashimis Goulart, one quick thing. Um, so you want Nicole to forward you everything? I mean, or do you want to check with Ross first to make sure she has it? Because like John had, had said before, that she was given a copy of the binder. Is there anything that you can think of outstanding that you're looking for specifically?
Does the, does the binder include drawings like this?
Not the original binder, because these are new, are newer plans.
So I assume the plans I picked up tonight are like you're showing tonight, okay?
Yes, yes.
I picked up one of everything I could because I haven't had nothing.
Yep.
So in effect, if everything is in that binder, and what I'm picking up tonight is the new stuff, we should be okay.
Okay.
So, um, I will check with Ross myself.
Okay.
Then I'll get back to, uh, Ms. to, uh, Ms. Skylison.
Perfect, okay.
If it appears something's missing, but I'll tell them to stop with the stuff I bring in tonight.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could, um, Nancy, also, um, all of the documents from, um, so the binder wasn't put online, because obviously it's huge, but anything since then has been put online through the website. Um, if you go to zoning board, agenda, send minutes, everything is there. If you're missing anything, reach out to me, and I have copies.
Is that the binder? That's what I should be looking for?
This, yes.
Okay.
So Ross, Ross did pick up two binders, one was Board of Health and one was Stormwater. I purposely asked for an extra one because of Stormwater, and I gave her two. So there should be at least the original one. Um, but again, if you're missing anything that isn't in here or online, just reach out to me.
Okay.
And, and Ross can reach out to me too.
Certainly, thank you.
Yep.
Is there, um, anyone else in the public that would just be heard?
Yep.
Um, once again, just state your name for the record, and, um, please, uh, sign your, um, address on the sign sheet.
What, just tell you? Randy Chase, nine hundred, some set out. Uh, I heard you guys talked about a ten-foot zone for the other side. What about the people on some set out? I don't see anything on there that shows there any bump up between the back of my property and where the cottage is.
Oh.
Nine hundred, some set out.
Yeah, and, uh, if I could respond.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, that's exactly the comment. I mean, we, we obviously respond to every comment we get.
Well, that's why I'm being asked.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we haven't had anyone ask specifically so far, so no, thank you.
And the other, a question I have about the college is, it says maybe three bedrooms. Well, does that change like your sewer flow? If you're going to have three bedrooms, do you have to change what that is?
Right, and that's all, all questions that I was, uh, attempted to address when I first mentioned that today, yeah.
And I find it kind of funny, you guys are all talking about, well, what floor the bedroom's on. Like, ah, this is a case of elderly people. I'm only fifty-three, I don't want to go up in downstairs.
Right.
What is the whole thing, just a ranch? You know?
Right.
These are just questions I ask. And, uh, the only other thing I had is, uh, you guys talked about, well, one thirty is a highway, um, is Mass U T. Can you talk to them about, well, maybe a flashing light near the entrance or something, a reduced speed? You know, because I'll let you pull out of my driveway between four and five in the afternoon, or six and seven in the morning, you won't want them. They fly by. I don't care what the traffic status is, I try to pull out of my driveway. I'll tell you how fast they're going over there. And, uh.
Yeah, I mean, that was.
If you want to adjust both, uh, the buffer and then the, um, what you're talking about the lighting, go ahead.
Right, I mean, that was one of our general comments about increasing safety overall.
Right.
And one of the measures that has been employed on other projects or on other roads where there's high speed is that feedback device, where you get the flashing speed as to what your speed is.
Yeah.
I know, I slow down.
Yeah.
And there's actually evidence that it causes all traffic to slow down when those types of things are installed.
Okay.
Um, so that's something that, that we're going to talk to the OT about. Um, we're, we're going to take a look at that area. Um, we just, we hadn't gotten any feedback on that specific area.
Just because three of the cottages above, well, above my property, so I didn't know how far we're going to be away.
Introduce yourself to the car and.
Okay, and is it, I understand, there's a lot, what's the lot size for the cottages?
There's no lot. All the cottages are a one lot.
So, so you don't have to have a specific amount of land for the cottages?
It's like, it's like a country.
That's one of these.
You might not have, um, been aware prior to hearing, but that's a link to a flyer of an existing project that gives you a sense of exactly what that product's going to look like. And, uh, so this is, uh, drive-through video, that's, that's with computer-generated form, what this will look like. This is an actual drill video of an actual project, so that might be helpful.
Are the links posted on the website?
It will be.
Okay.
So I think a lot is.
Yeah, the, the, we're trying, we're working, but I tested the one, the most recent one you guys sent. Now I could, but now my phone, no problem, so that, that should be fine to put online, yes.
So you don't have to take that with you, you can look on the website as well.
Okay.
All right, that's all the questions I had.
Uh, thank you. Is there anybody else that would just be heard? Yeah, come on up.
Tom Paul Silver, butter in the country, I'll drive. Um, couple of quick questions. This is, knowing on power, I assume at this point in time, they've already signed off on, on their investment as far as the, uh, the, their transmission easement. Is there any, any discussion with them?
No, exactly.
Not yet, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Um, number two, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but, because in the traffic study, when you do the traffic study, you, did you add like two hundred vehicles a day coming out of that, um, development? Is that included in the traffic study that you did? It is, okay. And you mentioned something about three hundred and fifty feet to four hundred and fifty feet, um, distance at fifty miles an hour? Um, what's, was it two seconds of the?
It's, it's more than that. So, so there's calculations that, that are standard design criteria based on travel speed, wet pavement, uh, reaction time of, uh, motorists and, and those, and that's where we get the basis of, uh, required minimum site distances, which enable vehicles to safely stop and avoid any collision. So if at forty-five miles an hour, that's, uh, that was three hundred and sixty feet. So all those calculations are based on scientific research and.
Sure, sure, I understand. I just want to make sure that you have the two hundred vehicles plus coming, uh, you know, included in that survey.
But estimated for generation of the project, everything's been added.
Okay.
And, and sorry, I just, so you're a member of the public, you have access to any information we have?
Sure.
The most recent traffic study is online, so if you want to peruse that for more detail, go right ahead.
Okay, and I have a few other questions. Um, this development proposing, you have three different, you have the cottages, you have townhouses, you have single-family, uh, house lots. The house lots is seven thousand feet to sixteen thousand feet, give or take a few feet. Um, do you have price points that, that you've got, um, in mind for those, for those single-family homes?
In, in the upper four hundred.
For the seven thousand foot lots? For the seven thousand foot lots?
Our, our experience is people pay for the house. They know that's lot, the lot size doesn't impact the whole lot.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and you do have, what did you say, a ten-foot buffer zone?
Correct.
The country, I'll drive, okay.
But it just, that is a no distur, so we can actually put the nails there in the disturbing. The setbacks, as you can see, we're able to put the houses farther away from the, the law line.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, I think that's it. Um, to, um, what's the next one? So next meeting, we're scheduled.
Um, we'll talk about that at, at.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure, yeah. Anybody else from the public that would just be heard? If you could, um, come up at this time, or we're going to be looking to adjourn shortly. Um, so I'm just going to make one more final call. Anyone else from the public? Tonight? No? Okay. So, um, amongst the board, um, is there anything we want to discuss? Um, we do have, uh, I do want to discuss, um, the date for the next meeting, but before we do that, um, anything about what we discussed tonight, um, very briefly and very thoroughly, if you could just, um, go through anything else that you're looking for, or, um, then, uh, you would like to be addressed?
We're talking about, uh, definitely go with the darks violating an easy standing.
Yes.
Get ahold of the, uh, the lighting company that we have. We have our own lighting company in town that's a member of the board, makes sure that we're on board with that.
Yeah.
Um, these are things they're asking us for the next meeting. I just want to have some answers for the, uh.
Yeah.
Um, as I said, for the most part, um, that's pretty much all I got right now. I'd say, uh, oh, and, um, we give him ask the developer, he could look into the back of Randy Chase and I never seen some set out, see what he can do for a, a buffer zone between his property and he did, and see what you can pull up on the next draw.
Um, just because I, I, I'm new to this aspect of it, and Greg, since you are the, uh, the point person for these, um, do you guys feel in need, or do you guys feel in need for a, a working session anytime soon? Or, um, oh, what do you guys think about that? We haven't discussed when the next one would be, so what are you guys thinking?
Yeah, I, I don't think we have too much time between now and the next meeting, so I think we're really trying to get down to the details on the engineering. So I, I think it's more, uh, as to when we would get the plan to Mr. Williams before, sorry, the additional detail on the Stormwater Management Calc's, uh, before, I believe, whatever we schedule for the next hearing.
Okay.
So if we start with that date and then work our way back, maybe we can come up with a plan as to what we're going to submit, uh, by what date.
So, and so I've been, we'll just go into that now. Um, so originally, the, uh, plan was the tenth, um, which is a Tuesday of December for the next meeting. I have had, uh, some travel plans, um, changed, um, for the, for the holiday time coming up. Um, is, uh, for, I guess, Marguerite too. Is there, um, we're thinking possibly if it works, the very, the fourteenth, which would be the following Tuesday? That, that date worked for you, correct?
Sorry, uh.
No, not fourteenth, uh.
The seventeenth?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Seventeenth, I'm, I'm sorry, that's my call.
If I, if I could just ask Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Um, Mrs. Goulart, when, because Stormwater is obviously a big part of what we're dealing with right now and looking at with the engineering folks, and assuming you're going to want to have an opportunity to have, to look at that material, discuss it with the Stormwater Committee as well. Um, is there, are there certain things that you want or need or want to be able to give back to us with potentially by the next meeting? If you could, like me, I'm not familiar with that part of the process.
Okay.
So that I know where we stand as to where we're looking at dates.
If the material to which Mr. Williams was responding to tonight is in the notebook, we've got a place to stop. Because any questions that come out of the Stormwater Committee that, that relate to what he responded to, we're going to ask him about, to provide us the information, to provide us some guidance in that area. If we're missing something, um, I'll get back to, uh, Skylison and say, we need to know this or this, we don't have this information, can you get this for us? We don't have a regular set of meetings. We've been, we've been setting meetings around the Aggie School project, quite frankly, because of, of its importance and they're trying to get it going. So.
So, once we have a chance to go through the, what, the material that's at the office, and look at what Mr. Williams responded to, again, I don't think, I don't think we're gonna have questions along there. I think as this works forward, and you get closer to actually talking about groundbreaking and things of that nature, physically actually working on it, I think we'll probably then have more questions, and maybe request a joint meeting.
So, that's what I'm getting at, so do you feel that we should, as a committee, include you, or as a board, include you on our next agenda, or not yet? As, you know, as if he didn't have any questions, or we'll see if there's any presentations.
Greg, can I just step in?
One thing you should be aware of, we don't have any drainage calculations right now.
Right, and I heard that.
Yeah, so you just have the plans, no more fire.
And, the reason that's familiar is because that's part of what we're waiting for from the Aggie school. And obviously, drainage calculations on that project are important too. So I know we go through these things in phases, so that's why I'm saying, what I would say in response to you, Mr. Gale, as long as we know when there's a meeting coming up, I'll try to have somebody here, or I will be here myself, but if I know ahead of time there's a meeting scheduled, I will be in touch with the Skilson, or with Mr. Carr, and say to him, Stormwater would like comments on this, so it would be on the agenda and up front. And you as a committee, and obviously the proponents of the project, will have an idea ahead of time what we're asking about. Mr. Williams will know, and if it's something that he's also waiting for, then we'll know. Well, he's still waiting for it, so it's.
Right.
You know, so I don't want you to schedule your meetings around us, but as long as we know when you're meeting, if we have something, we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I have been sending out emails after our meetings to tell as many members and people in the administration as possible that the next dates are coming. I did a work session, and any of the hearings coming up, and it's a standing invitation for any sort of comments. So, if you haven't been getting an email, I know we converted over to, instead of town, Dayton, to Dayton, that's.
Yeah, that one doesn't work. How I found out about it tonight was, it was actually announced at a selectmen's meeting. And I think they put it on the town website. But I'm still using Comcast.net.
Okay.
When I get the one that works, that's the town, I will let everyone know.
Okay, that's fine, um, okay, I, okay.
And just in response to this slogan, I believe I've got some information at home, that I got an MMA about the Doc Skies that I can get to Ms. Skilson, and you all can read it.
Please, thank you.
Um, so in regards to, just going back to Marguerite and Peter Williams, we were looking for the, that was the, I'm sorry, the seventeenth of December.
That worked, that worked for you?
For you, how are you guys, is that okay?
Works.
I apologize for that, unfortunately.
No, no, no problem, it works for us as well. And we were actually just discussing having additional information in by the second at the latest.
Oh, okay.
Would that be sufficient? Mr. Williams? Gives you two full weeks. So we'll try to get it to you as early as we can that week.
You can do the fifth on the ninth, that is plenty enough time.
Yeah, and I know the board has a standing order, or just request about two weeks, and I think we can comply with that in this instance, so we'll try to make sure you get the full two weeks regardless. And I think we have a good sense of what additional information we're looking to present at this point.
Okay, so that being said, just, goes for the next meeting, we are not going to be having at the school.
Okay.
It's going to be at the town hall at the lower level, where we have our regular meetings. Just simply because of the size of the turnout, there's no need to have this large space anymore. And the space that we have down there is more than sufficient for, obviously, if we have ever had something coming up that we feel like that has to change, we'll let you know, but as of right now, expect all the meetings to be no longer carried at the town hall.
We can get a decent turnout in that room, I think we can squeeze.
Oh, yeah, oh, for sure.
It'll be nice and cozy.
For sure, okay, so just, and we'll keep the time at seven. So, the next forty B hearing for Strawberry Fields will be December seventeenth, Tuesday, at seven PM at the lower-level town hall. Again, that's the next forty B public hearing, meeting. Uh, can I have my reading?
I would just make a motion to that effect.
Yeah, you want a motion, okay, so if I get a motion to make the.
Continue it.
To continue the public hearing to, on December seventeenth, Tuesday, lower-level town hall, at seven PM. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion to accept that date.
A second, please. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing has been continued to that date. Is there anything else before, I ask for a vote to adjourn? Uh, hold on a second, yeah. Okay, yeah, so guys, it's a little unrelated to Strawberry Fields, it's unrelated completely. Our next regular meeting then, I know we were discussing this, we were discussing this last night, as to when our regular meeting would be technical, based on the seventeenth. So, Marguerite, for what we need to discuss, our next regular meeting, the eighteenth, that Wednesday, does that work for you?
I'm free after six o'clock.
That, yeah, that's fine, and then we're good for our meeting space. That would be the third, the third Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will have to discuss the meeting space with that, because the eighteenth, that Wednesday, because the third Wednesday, the planning board meets in that room. So we'll look to possibly see if the upper level at the old, that's not the old town hall, but the annex, so to speak. Should that be okay? Okay, so the location for our regular meeting on the eighteenth is to be determined, but we do, we do have to have that meeting.
What time are you gonna set it for?
Uh, seven, yeah. Anything else, Nicole, do you have anything? Anything else along the board? Alright.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The eighteenth, what, where do you wanna meet, what facility?
Uh, well, the eighteenth would be our regular meeting.
But what room, like, what's building and room?
Um, that's to be determined, we weren't looking in to do our regular meeting space, but planning is that room.
The eighteenth, the eighteenth the board of selectmen will be meeting at the town hall, in its meeting room. So, maybe you should look at Old Town Hall. The upper level of Old Town Hall.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was our first.
When you said not the Old Town Hall, I.
Oh, I'm sorry, the old, yeah, yeah. I think that's right, okay. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All set, thank you.